Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Beacon Board of Education. Please rise, we pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Here.
Betsy Dennis.
Here.
Jennifer Edge.
Absent.
Tracey Annalac Everett.
Here.
Christine Galba.
Here.
Frank Garnett.
Here.
George Pachin.
Here.
Bill Zoff.
Here.
Melissa Thompson.
Here.
Dr. Dorward, would you review the fire exits?
Yes, there's fire exits to the rear, to the side of the building. It's very, very intense.
Okay, and would you like to introduce your workshop tonight?
Yes, we actually have three parts to our workshop. We're gonna start off with Mr. Jiang, who's going to talk about providing an update on his building, what's been happening since his parents' school.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm actually, I don't think I'm gonna use this, but if you think that I need to, let me know. I'm always practicing on projecting and getting my voice across the room. Part of the fun of being working in elementary school. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tarkan Jiang, and I'm the proud principal of Sargent Elementary School. This evening will take a few minutes of your time to share about Sargent, where we've been and what we are. A few years ago, Sargent was a school in need of improvement. The school did not make adequate yearly progress, or AYP, in ELA for students with disabilities. Since then, we have not only made AYP consistently, but have continued to further exceed that benchmark. During this time, we have not only strengthened our academic programs, but we've also introduced new programs for students to address their social-emotional development. This was accomplished through thorough research, careful planning, and strategic implementation. My role as the principal of Sargent has been to develop, monitor, and maintain systems that allow our faculty and staff to execute these strategies in the most efficient and effective ways possible. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the people that directly impact the lives of our children on a daily basis. So if you're a Sargent faculty or staff member, just ask for your stand for a moment. Do you recognize? And also, if we have any parents, maybe former parents, who's Sargent?
Former parents.
So, thank you for everything that you do. Some of the parents are former PTO parents. They're active in our organization, and we have a very active core group now. And the most often asked question by them was, "What can we do to help?" And I truly appreciate everyone's efforts on behalf of our students. While our success has been very rewarding, the challenges we face are becoming greater as the educational environment, where we are required to do more with less persists. As we identify new areas that need our attention, we are forced to redirect resources to address them, creating a void elsewhere. My concern is that we will be unable to sustain our progress. When we are successful, we should celebrate it. When there is cause for concern, we should rally together to overcome it. It is time once again to rally. I would like to end on a positive note, because it is our positivity and dedication that makes our school district an institution that has created college and career-ready citizens long before was a term the state used to describe successful graduating students. I don't know if you're aware or not, but thirty, almost thirty percent of the teachers at Sargent Elementary School are Beacon graduates. This is not the reason they were invited to join our faculty. However, I do believe that it is part of the reason they were recognized as our top candidates. This is a prime example of what happens when teachers and families share a common vision of growing a child into an outstanding citizen who contributes to the betterment of their community. At this time, I would like to turn you over to Mr. Michael McAlduff, who will speak further about Sargent Elementary School. He is one of the examples I mentioned earlier, one of our fine teachers who's also a Beacon graduate. Thank you.
I'm gonna do, I'm gonna have to move around. Stand still. Before I get started, I just wanna personally thank Mr. Jiang. I'm doing my internship for administration, and he was gracious enough to let me come in and give a presentation, and he's been very helpful, as the whole district has. So even Mr. Mulhern has been helpful as well. So, I wanna thank the board for allowing me to come up, Mr. Tim, Dr. Dorward, and a special thanks to all the Sargent teachers who helped me put this together. So, I'll get started on that. So we're just gonna give a brief overview of how we've been incorporating pro-social and emotional behaviors in the classroom over the past couple of years. So an overview of this year is, we have been incorporating the Common Core in math and ELA. I don't know if anybody's heard of that yet. So it's just getting, it's making its way out there, so hopefully by the end of the year, we'll all have some more information on that. But the Common Core is really preparing college and career-ready students, and I think Beacon does a great job of that, without that title. Our job as educators is to deliver fun, get educational lessons, which we still are able to do. A great job by the Central Office to support us with instructional materials and manipulators, which we were given this year to help prepare and teach the Common Core, as well as professional development. So, I, we appreciate all of the support the district has given to the teachers. The obstacles. The rigor of the Common Core is strenuous for educators, administrators, the Central Office. It's a very daunting task at times. We found that it's difficult to incorporate other educational opponent, components, I'm sorry, that are important for the success of our students. Social studies and science has kinda taken a side seat to the ELA math, because we're trying to get that out. School-wide assemblies have been cut down a little bit because of the rigor of the Common Core. And also, just as important is the promoting of social and emotional growth in our classrooms, our building, and our district. So how are we promoting social-emotional growth in Sargent, or at Sargent, I should say? Two years ago, we were fortunate enough to have the Seven Habits come into our building. Every teacher, TA, support staff, administrators, were able to go through what the Seven Habits are and how to deliver them to our students. And really, the Seven Habits is a simple principle-centered approach, which solves personal and professional problems, promotes values such as integrity, human dignity, and fairness. And we received that two years ago in June, June of 2012, I believe. And we left the school year feeling very energetic, motivated, to come back and bring that to the students. And this is how we did it. Looking back at last year, big help from the PTO, they established a Seven Habits Book Club for the parents, reaching out to the community, trying to get them more involved, teaching them what the Seven Habits are, and how they can use it in their lives. Mrs. Luzowski, one of our teachers, created a Seven Habits chain. And this really recognized students for making good choices, following the Seven Habits. And that chain started in the second grade wing, and it made its way down to kindergarten and through the third grade wing. It was a great visual force, teachers and students, to see of all the good that's happening in our school. Continuing to look back, teachers receive Seven Habits books, which is called Seven Habits of Happy Kids, and that really includes student-friendly stories that teach morals and lessons that go along with the Seven Habits. It has activities and other informational things that can help promote the Seven Habits within a classroom, in the building, and even out into the community. And finally, the students receive Seven Habits planners. We really were pushing the Seven Habits. So, and the Seven Habits planners have suggestions and activities for students, for them to do at home. It's a great way to get it to the parents, because the parents see the planners every night, and were able to follow along what habit we were doing, and how to promote and help them. This year has been an arduous task, promoting social-emotional growth because of the Common Core. Incorporating the Seven Habits has been something that we're still dedicated to, and thanks to the SLT, PBIS, and our climate committees, they've joined forces. And we're able to now incorporate them into our morning announcements. And finally, Mr. Levine's contributions to our classrooms have also helped promote this social and emotional growth. He interacts with the teachers and the TAs to give them advice, see how they're doing. He works closely with our second and third grade teachers and our self-contained classrooms. He actually was in our building today, so he was gracious enough to stay and give us an overview of what he does and what he can bring to the school. But before we do that, I just wanted to read one thing that the second-grade teachers prepared, that will give you a little insight to what Mr. Levine actually does. It says, "Mr. Levine is working hard and having a profound effect on not only the children's social choices, but their academic choices as well." I knew he was really reaching the students when I heard them coming in from the playground randomly singing songs that he had brought to the classroom, or talking about connections they made with each other at recess or at a special. So, I'll pass this on to Mr. Levine.
Thank you. Good evening to everybody, good evening to the Board of Education, and I, I am so grateful for the opportunity to return to Beacon for the first half of this school year, where I've been working with three of the elementary schools. But I will focus my brief comments on what I've been doing here at Sargent. So I've taken Michael's slide, he'd already created this, and I looked, and I thought, "Well, let me just give my quick perspective on this." Not just what it is I'm doing, and what we're doing, and what I'm doing to support, hopefully complement what's happening here, but also some of the research base for this work, because it is really based on research and my experiences. This is my thirtieth year as an educator, and after eighteen years as an elementary/middle school teacher, I started to work with school districts and schools, with the leadership, with the teachers, with the teaching assistants, mental health, everybody looking to create a fortified focus by meeting the needs of the children, and that's really what it's about. And I wanna stress that when we look at the Common Core and social and emotional learning and academic success and achievement, they are interrelated, they're not separate. So when we look at these issues, it's really looking at the social and emotional and academic achievement and skills of the children. So when I look at the work I do, and you look at the society we live in today, children today, and this is, I'm paraphrasing the work of educators and social scientists, specifically a man named Daniel Goldman, who's very well-known for his work on emotional intelligence, which is gaining great support, was very much in sync with the work of Stephen Covey, who wrote the book, The Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. Dr. Goldman stated that children today have more opportunities for less social interaction. And I think if you're a parent, you certainly know that. Okay, I'm a parent, and I certainly see that. And when we look into the life trajectory of a child, and we're talking about elementary school children here, but looking at their trajectory beyond high school and into college and beyond college, they could be extremely adept at their area of focus, their skills, their gifts. But if they don't have the ability to build healthy relationships and maintain those, and work cooperatively and collaboratively, it will be a much greater challenge for them to continue that trajectory of success and happiness in their lives. And so that's really what social and emotional emphasize, the social and emotional areas. And when we look at pro-social behaviors, pro-social choices, pro-social skills, it's really looking at the research on resilience. And just to mention a name, Emmy Werner, who did research on resilience, children from very, very challenging life circumstances, with a multitude of risk factors, who somehow grew into being successful and happy adults. And she looked at it over a thirty-five-year period, what were the conditions that helped create those successful and happy children into success, happy, productive adults? And what she articulated from her work were called protective factors. Protective factors create resilience, resilience, flexibility, adaptability, the ability to manage stressful life events. And what she said is, "The primary internal protective factor are pro-social skills." When children do lack pro-social skills, we will see the flip side, we will see antisocial behaviors. And I know from my experiences back in 2008, 2009, working with parents of children going into the middle school, there was a real concern, and it was really more, not so much what the conditions of the school were, but what their concerns as parents were, that there was gonna be bullying and other forms of aggression in the school. And we did a lot of work back then, and what we looked at is, the more pro-social skills, the less antisocial behaviors. And the earlier, the better. I have to commend Sargent for what you're doing, relating to the Seven Habits, relating to infusing this work, combining the various teams to create this culture of emotional safety, is what I'll call it. Because when you see pro-social skills, pro-social behaviors, you will see minimized antisocial behaviors. And the other piece around this, and I really wanna emphasize, by the meta-analysis of over two-hundred-and-fifty schools who were implementing social and emotional programming, they found that the average increase in standardized test scores was eleven percentage points. So there's an absolute link. When a child feels present, emotionally safe, with the skills to equip them to manage the stresses they will face, which we could predict, their focus will be greater, and it will enable them to achieve a higher success academically, not just measured by test scores, but by their engagement in what they're learning. These are just some quotes from some of the work. This is just, "Taking the high road is a name." We name things for the kids, so they have access to them, which really means a pro-social skill, rather than the low road. "Lifting people up." Michael mentioned the music that I use. It's not for entertainment. This work that I do is very much based on the research on neurobiology, specifically the way the brain responds to a different kind of a situation. And children in stress, and many kids are in stress, whatever the reason is, there's a lot of stress, the brain tends to shut down when kids are in stress, and that's when we see antisocial behaviors. And so the music that I bring in, which I then give recordings to the teachers and some supports to utilize, it is based on the research, and it really provides an opportunity for them to really learn about their brain. I worked with a class today, and I taught them what a brain break was, and it's stopping everything and taking twenty seconds just to kinda breathe and focus, and looked at applications for when you're taking a test, and you might be nervous when you're playing at a sport, when you have a disagreement, when you're just overwhelmed with a stimulus, to provide an opportunity to step away, take a break, and return, which I think for many adults, as a one, as a parent, is a wonderful practice as well. I have to remember that for myself. This is just reemphasizing the use of music. And I, as I said, I remember reading Dr. Covey's book in 1986, The Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. And one of his key habits was, "Understand before being understood." And that's a relevant skill and perception that I bring in and support the work that's being done here. I'm very familiar with the Seven Habits program for kids. I worked with it extensively with K through eight, elementary/middle school in the South Bronx for four years, and it showed a real shift and a real change. So again, I commend Sargent for all of your work that you are bringing in, being proactive as opposed to being reactive. Let's start early, let's work from a prevention perspective. I thank you very much for listening to me. I'm so appreciative of this opportunity, and thank you again, everybody, for your support.
Just have one more presentation from Mrs. Cirillo, our physical education teacher.
I have no technology. I'm gonna go a little bit old-school, but I will give you some copies of this, to just take one and pass down there. They're not identical. I have a program where I have some Beanie Baby teddy bears that circulate. They spend the day with students in the classroom. And this one happens to be gymnastic Gabby. She hasn't made her debut yet, but you can see from those journals, it's got a Monday through Friday, and each student has the bear with them for the day. On their desk, they go to music, they go to library, they go to art, they go to recess and lunch. So you'll see that apparently they like to eat, because they're feeding the bears all the time. The premise is to record activities that they do. So he gets a lot of activity, obviously, in the gym, but also in the music room, they take the bear and do whatever kind of dancing and things like that. It's sort of an offspring of the story of Black Stanley, who went on adventures and people wrote. So I thought I'd combine the journaling that kids do in the classroom with the help of our teachers, and the two second-grade teachers experienced him first. That was jumping Jamie. And the fourth and fifth graders had, are getting the opportunity to take the bear home with them for several days. The packet has a pedometer, so they'll wear the pedometer, record their steps and what activities they do, write in the journal for either Monday through Thursday, or Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then return it on the subsequent day, and I'll give it to somebody else. They also, before getting that, they had to sign a user agreement, agreeing to take care of the bear and be responsible with it, because it is going home and going to places. And, you know, as long as it's not distracting to players, coaches, participants, and that no damage to the bear will result, as a result of using him. So, you know, I've done this for two years. The original bear was exercise Eddie, and the kids like him, and I'm just hoping to promote a little more activity and recording what they do, so that there's a connection between the literature, or really just the writing, creative writing, and activity. So, that's what we do.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to share what's going on at Sargent. Can I turn it over anything to Mr. Romano next, or?
No, actually, we're gonna have a presentation about Battle of the Books.
Yeah.
I'd like to thank the board, and Dr. Dorward, and everyone here at Sargent School, and Kelly for answering all my questions. But my name is Ginny Fielder, and I am the head of youth services at Howlin' Librarian Beacon. And I run programs for children, birth to teenagers. And one of our most favorite programs that we do for...
This is here.
PowerPoint?
Yeah, it's a PowerPoint. Let's see.
I'm sorry, I brought a flashlight that has a hundred and thirty-five million frames on it. But in any case, one of our most favorite activities that we do is Battle of the Books every summer, and it is for students ages well-going into sixth through ninth grade. And we're here to honor some of our past and present Battle of the Books All-Stars. But I will turn it over to Tom and Kristen Rigney, our head coaches, and they have been coaching for now, you're going into your sixth year, I think?
I think so, yeah.
Coaches, and we have been doing this for ten years now. So, we, I'll turn it over to Tom, short presentation.
Thank you, and thank you very much for spending a few minutes to honor a terrific library program and some really amazing kids. Several years ago, my wife dragged me into a summer reading program. She thought she'd be a little help with, because I am a middle school teacher, and it's a middle school program, a summer reading program. And I said, "All right, I'll give it a shot." And this is a little bit about what the Battle of the Books is all about. Who we are. We're middle school students between the grade six and nine, who love to read. They meet once a week throughout the summer. We discuss great books, eat pizza. We're librarians, coaches, and parents who support them, and eat pizza with us. We meet about once a week during the summer, I think Thursday nights, four to five to seven, right? Couple hours a night, couple hours a week, and talk about these books that we read. Battle of the Books is basically a trivia contest. It's, it's based on, it's basically a tournament mode for young people. All the books, all the questions in the trivia contest are based on specific books that all the participants of all the libraries read. We're one of twenty-five libraries in the Hudson Valley area that participates in our regional Battle of the Books. We compete with each other in mini-battles throughout the summer, sort of like scrimmages. We'll invite a couple of libraries to come over, or we might go to a library and compete with them. Each battle that we have consists of a series of twenty-five questions that pertain specifically to the books that we've read. So all twenty-five libraries read the same eight high-quality children's fiction, and all the questions are based on that. The answer to every question is the title and author of the book. And these kids have to know every last minute detail of, you know, the entire story, the setting, the characters, and also they have to know author's notes and some other, anything that's between the covers, they need to be familiar with. At the beginning of September, our program culminates in a regional Battle of the Books double-elimination tournament, basically set up like, you know, your March Madness tournament, except that it's double-elimination. That way, every team gets to compete twice against the other team. In 2005, we were a charter member, one of the first. In 2010, we were champions for the first time. I have some champions here from that team. In 2012, we took third place, and then this past September, we champions again. But every year, we have fun. That's our trophy. There's a number of reasons why this is an important program for kids. Obviously, promoting summer reading in the middle grades, it's essential for kids in middle grades to read, it's essential. But also, it reinforces concepts, this concept of teamwork and sportsmanship. We find that many of the kids that come to us are kids that love to read, and yet, you know, aren't always exposed to competition. So it gives them a chance to participate in competition, where they may not be the athletic type, you know? And also, reading can often be sort of a solitary activity, and this is a way for kids to get together and realize that, you know, there's other kids around you that like to read. It's okay to like to read, and it gives them something to talk about, something to hang out and enjoy each other's company about. We have a very diverse population in our competition. A lot of different types of kids are attracted to this program. And of course, we have a lot of fun. It's very important for the school district. I have a child in the school district, I'm happy to be supporting a library program that's important for our school district. The students are exposed to a wide variety of genres. Every year, we usually have fantasy, a science fiction, realistic fiction, historical fiction, sports fiction. They usually throw in a classic. A couple of years ago, we had The Wizard of Oz. So it's a real nice mix of literature. So kids, you know, even kids that like to read sometimes get stuck in ruts, where all they read is, you know, fantasy books. This is a way for them to kinda like, break out of that and check out some other stuff they might not necessarily have thought to check out. They engage in critical literary discussions. What we try to do is every week, focus on one specific book and talk about it, really like, break down, you know, the plotline and a lot of the literary devices and techniques that are used, and what makes a story a good story. And again, you know, because we have kids that are so engaged in the reading, we really have some terrific discussions in the summer. Again, students are interacting with a diverse population. We have a wide variety of kids that comes, it's a diverse age group, and it's really neat to see how they kinda coalesce and come together. Of course, it also, being engaged in summer reading, of course, is gonna prepare the students better for the rigors of the new Common Core standards. And as we all know, when kids read, schools succeed. It's important for our community as well, because it brings together people from all over the Hudson Bat World.
We're skipping this, right?
Well, but it's true. I mean, beyond the scope of the school and the library, it's important for a community to have a community of people that read, you know? We have our kids come back, our kids are former competitors have come back to help coach the kids. So it's, it ends up having the effect of creating a sort of mentorship within the library, where the older kids, you know, and our former champions come back and help out the new kids, you know, learning what it's really all about.
Tom, I believe that's the...
That's our last one? Great. So, again, thank you very much for your time, and again, thanks for spending a few minutes to honor these terrific kids.
I'd like to just introduce our, this is Ginny. She came to see you, not me. This is their banner, their first-place banner. As you saw in the first picture, we marched in the spirit of Beacon Day with our banner. This is the beautiful crystal globe trophy that they've won, and for the second time now. And I, this is only a small, a small bit of our All-Star team, but we also have a, usually about twenty-five to thirty students participate each summer, but we do bring a ten, ten-member All-Star team to the regional battle every year. And Sarah Poons is a past champion, but also now an assistant coach. and a scorekeeper at the regional battle. Autumn Lennon and Ella Lewis and Sydney Degoreo are three of our champion teams from this year. Sydney has graduated now because she's going, she's in 10th grade, or, yeah. You're going into 10th grade? You're going, I mean, next, you'll be going into 10th grade, yes. So we hope she comes back as a coach. And Zachary Degoreo has also... It's even funnier if you knew what Tom was thinking.
I'm not saying it.
Okay. But Zachary is an emcee now for, well, you have two years at our regional battle, and he is an assistant coach and also a past champion. And Zachary and Sydney have just a few words that they'd like to say.
Hi, I'm Sydney Degoreo, I go to Beacon High School, I'm a freshman this year. And I'd like to tell you a little bit about my experiences with the Battle of the Books program. So even before I started the program, I was kind of like introduced to it from my brother because he started doing it before I did. And that's kind of what made me want to start doing the program, is I saw how much fun he was having and how much fun it looked like I would be able to have. And now, you read eight books in the program, but when I first started, you had read 10, so it was even a little more difficult. But it's a lot of fun because it's like interesting books and maybe not books that I would have picked on my own, but that I still found that I really enjoyed to read. All the reading that I did over the summer with the program, it really helped prepare me for the reading that I did during the year in school in my English class. And I think it helped prepare me for the English class that I'm in this year, which is kind of, it's a little bit more difficult than the other ones that I've been in because it's an honors English class. And I think that Battle of the Books really helped me get into that and like succeed in school. And even more than the reading in the program, it's a really good way to meet new people and make new friends. And a lot of the people that I've met there, I've been able to keep in touch with, keep in touch with, even though I'm aged out of the program now, I can still, still keep in touch with them. And, yeah.
Hi, I'm Zachary Degoreo, I'm a junior at Beacon High School. Before I start, I would like to go on to say that it's important to remember with the program that a lot, all this talk about read eight books, read 10 books. There's no requirements, which is one of the great things about. If you see two books that you want to read that you really like, you could just read those two and shop and have a good time with us. You may not get to go to the final battle, but it's still a lot of fun that way. There's no requirements, there's no stress, it's all good, so. All right, I've been involved since the summer of sixth grade, and I'm grateful for all the benefits that we talked about that I've been able to get from it. After the summer of eighth grade, you age out of the program as team members, but the library system offers many opportunities to participate in other ways. You can volunteer as scorekeepers, emcees, or runners, who basically run around and do all the tiny jobs that pop up in the middle of the battle. Last year and the year before, I got to be an emcee in one of the battle rooms, which is a lot of fun. I got to read the questions for the teams. It puts a different perspective on it. You got to see from a step back what the kids go through, it's really interesting. It's serious, but at the same time, they have a lot of fun and everyone's very nice, which is great about it. Another thing is the sportsmanship, which we talked about before. It's just like any sporting event, there's, you know, you keep score, there's a winner and a loser, it gets close, there's tense, overtime, whatever it comes to. And, you know, it gets crazy, but it's a lot of fun, and that's another big important part of it. But all of these things, the main thing is the fun, the friendship, and all that that comes from it. So I hope that maybe one day we can have it here at Beacon. It'd be fun to add one more championship to that list right here in our home school. So thank you for your time.
So I just had a brief comment. I think it's always important to maintain a good relationship between the school district and our public library system. When I heard about the program, I thought it was a great opportunity to have you come out and present. And it would be great if we could have more of the kids involved. And of course, a congratulation to the Beacon team. So last but not least, we have our athletic presentation, the Athletic Budget. So we have Mr. Romanino, and is he going to join in for part?
I'm going to just speak during this.
Okay.
Before I talk about my presentation, I have a few announcements to make. First of all, over the last four days, we signed, we had two athletes sign NCAA scholarships to some outstanding universities. On last Thursday, Torres Phillips signed a football scholarship to Villanova, a full scholarship to Villanova, our first football player to sign a scholarship since the 1980s. And he was courted by a lot of colleges over the last month, including Nebraska, Arkansas, UConn, Albany, Maine. It was quite a month, and he finally chose Villanova. Today, we celebrated another signing. Noriana Ragwin signed an NCAA scholarship to UConn to play girls soccer. She became the first female athlete, female soccer player to get an NCAA scholarship. We're really proud of both of those athletes. And by the way, in the fall, we had two other athletes sign NCAA scholarships. Tony Romanelli to Wake Forest for baseball. And we had Taylor Hughes sign a girls' basketball scholarship to St. Peter's. We have some outstanding athletes, and their hard work paid a full scholarship to some outstanding colleges. Over the weekend, we had the privilege of hosting the Division II Wrestling Championships. It was an outstanding weekend. It was the smaller schools in our section, Class B, C, and D schools. Although our school didn't compete, we were the venue, we hosted it. And it was great, it was a great opportunity to showcase our facilities. And the feedback that I got from the Westchester schools that had never been here was really pleasing. They were very impressed of our high school. In March, March 7th, we will be hosting the New York State Regional Finals in boys' basketball, Class A and B. Hopefully, our boys' team will be still alive and be playing that game. The winner of that game goes to the Final Four in Glenn's Fall. So that's going to be another big night for Beacon High School. And in the spring, we're hosting the Class B Track and Field Championships. So we're, you know, our facilities are being used, we're getting to showcase a lot of our, all of our facilities, so we're very proud of them. In your packet, what a handout I just gave you, as you know, we're in postseason for our winter season. And swimming, swimming and diving, Sectionals, Qualify for the States is taking place this week, diving tomorrow at Purchase. And then on Wednesday, Felix Festa in Clarkstown Schools for swimming. Bowling Sectionals, if you'd like to see some bowling, go up to Fishkill. Girls' bowling was today, and boys' bowling is tomorrow up at Fishkill. Track is at the Armory in New York City on the New York State Qualifiers, February 19th. Wrestling is at Arlington this weekend, on Saturday, and then on Sunday, the championships. And we do have an outstanding wrestler at 192 pounds, Vinnie Grella, who, Andrew Grella, excuse me, who will be attending Binghamton next fall. So those are the events, sectional events. You also have, on the sheet is the schedule for boys' and girls' basketball. As you know, we have two outstanding basketball teams. Thursday is the first game, sectional game, it's an out bracket game. We will be home, we're preliminary seed, we're seeded at seventh. So we will be home for that out bracket game. And if it doesn't snow, we'll have a doubleheader on Friday with the girls at five and the boys at seven. We expect our girls' team to be the number one seed going into the Sectionals. So you have the schedule here, providing the weather holds up. Now for the budget. By the way, that's my first slide?
I have a quick question and a comment. Do you remember us ever having boys, I mean, assuming the boys, when their out bracket game on Thursday, do you remember us ever having boys and girls both at home?
Yes.
Doubleheader, how long has it been?
When we opened the school, we had, I think, two years in a row, we had boys and girls games.
Second, I'd like to make a quick comment. So I ended up here most of Friday and Saturday for a different reason, but got to see the wrestling tournament, and I just want to commend Mr. Romanino and his team. They did a fantastic job. I think there were 15 or 16 schools here, about 150 or 60 wrestlers. And Mr. Romanino ran a tight ship and kept everything rolling. And from what I saw from all the athletes and the parents, everyone was quite pleased with the facility and the event in general, so thank you to Mr. Romanino and his team.
Thank you. My first slide here, I get to highlight our NCAA scholarship winners. Torres Phillips, Taylor Hughes, Tony Romanelli, and Noriana Ragwin. So they're our NCAA scholarship winners. This is our program. It's basically the same program as we've had the last few years. We will be adding, I have proposed adding Modified Wrestling and Modified Cross Country. And we'll discuss that as we go along. Full-slay of events for a Class A school. The only thing we're really missing, I would say, from some other Class A schools is field hockey, which is really having been an interest. Boys' lacrosse, some interest from time to time, but not enough to add a team. Ice hockey. But we, for an A school, we have a full-slay of teams that we offer our students. Last year, if you remember, we eliminated, yeah, the second athletic trainer position. We still had our athletic trainer on staff from Orthopedic Associates, so that was quite a bit of savings for us last year. Positions added to the budget. Modified wrestling, that was cut from the 11, 12, oops, typo there. Cut from the 11, 12 budget due to insufficient participation. Had nothing to do with the overall budget, but it didn't warrant having the team because we only had five or six wrestlers. Cross country, the same thing, 2009, just didn't warrant having the, justify having the, having the team. So we did not offer it the last few years. What I'm seeing now and hearing is that there's interest. In the fall, Mr. Henry and Mr. Paulson were able to, was able to recruit a lot of ninth, seventh and eighth grade kids, kind of do it as a modified team with their varsity team, and took them to a few invitationals to run. But we can certainly justify that team, having that team for next year. Modified wrestling, again, we hold a general meeting at the beginning of the season to recruit kids for specific teams, for various teams. And there was an interest. Unfortunately, we didn't have the team. Now, as you well know, the USA Wrestling Club has come to you over the last two years and asked, you know, to include that in the budget. I really think that we would have enough students to justify having Modified Wrestling. And my sell to you and to my sell to the, to the people that are interested in Modified Wrestling, the parents of, it's time, the USA Club needs to get 15 kids on the team. And we hire a coach, he needs to go out and recruit 15 kids. If we don't get to 15 kids, we don't have the team. Same thing with Cross Country. Overall budget, I've come to you, I've come to here, come to the board probably over the last 10 years with a decrease in budget. Coaching stipends here this year, going up about $6,000, $7,000 due to contractual obligations. Equipment, this line hasn't changed in five years. Contractual, this line, this is where we pay all of our fees, our dues to the state, our dues to the conference, track meets, wrestling tournaments. All those types of things are paid out of this code here, contractual. Hasn't changed in probably five years. Reconditioning, we recondition our helmets, all of our football equipment has to go out. By law, the helmets have to be reconditioned. All the shoulder pads are sanitized, all the equipment is sanitized. Baseball, softball, track, same, excuse me, lacrosse, same thing, they have to go out. Supply budget, hasn't changed probably in the last five years. OCE's budget, at one point about six or seven years ago, we were over budget. We've been budgeting $80,000, $85,000, probably over the last four or five years, and that's, that hasn't changed. We haven't been over budget on that line. So my total budget for this year is $380,000, up from $367, an increase of $13,000. We'll break it down a little further for you. And again, I went back, I went back to 2008. And according to my records, my budget at that time was about $430,000. So over the last six years, I keep decreasing the budget. I don't think I could decrease the budget anymore without losing programs. We did eliminate assistant coaches, and we did eliminate a few other teams, minor teams, along the way. But the biggest savings was in the assistant coaching positions. And again, all right, now, breakdown. Modified wrestling, $4,200, that's what it's going to cost to budget Modified Wrestling. About $2,800 of it is a coaching stipend. The rest is officials, transportation. Modified Cross Country, $22, it's very inexpensive, two very inexpensive sports. Grand total, $6,400. So add in that $13,000 increase overall budget, $6,400 of it is Modified Sports. Coaching stipends, I just break it down a little further. Equipment, break it down, you can see, reconditioning, break it down. Supplies, supplies, the way I operate, I tell the coaches, tell me what you need, not what you want. And I'm pretty tight with the money. In fact, I have every team on a rotation for uniforms. If it was up to the coaches, they would buy new uniforms every other year. But they're all on a rotation, and I spend my money wisely. Other, again, I saw that, you saw, you got the explanation a little while ago. Always comes up, Modified Sports. Overall, out of my budget, it's a cost of $54,000. If you add in the transportation and supervision, it's about $75,000. I know it always comes up, if things got bad, how much does Modified Sports cost? That's the number, $54,000, out of that, added that $360,000 budget. Add it at, add it at 360,000 budget. And again, it shows in yellow what the, those two sports, sports would cost. Future considerations and capital projects. Colorado Timing Pool Scoreboard needs to be replaced. Last year, we brought in a, somebody to do some, a repairman. Scoreboard is now obsolete, where he's getting parts from, kind of getting parts from other schools that have taken their scoreboards down. It needs to be replaced. The timing system itself, that's, the pads and the console, we're fine. It's the, it's the scoreboard that's on the, on the wall, that needs to be replaced. The pool lockers in the locker rooms need to be, need to be replaced. Moist environment, they're rusting out, they just need to be, you know, again, technology, we could probably do plastic or some type of better lockers and bigger lockers. Track needs to be resurfaced. It's been about six or seven years since we've done it. If you recall, the board members that were on the board when Mr. De Cheseverre was here, we, we let it go too far. We had to strip it down and it ended up costing us more money because we had to strip it down. We need to start thinking about resurfacing the track. Fieldhouse, Fieldhouse needs some repairs. That's at Hammond Field, for people that don't know. That Fieldhouse was built in, I think, 1986, 87. And really, we haven't had any work done on it to speak of, other than a new roof and some new lockers on one side of the locker room. But these are things, when you go to the capital project in the future, we need to look at. Not saying we need it tomorrow, but we need to start thinking about that. So, highlights of the budget. $13,000 increase from, from the 13, oh, I have the wrong date, I'm sorry. 12, 13 athletic budget. It's about 3.5 increase. We've added two, two teams at about $6,400. No positions or teams were eliminated. Budget includes coaching increase due to BTA contract obligations. Teams have met the participation, participation requirements. And in your packet, I list all the, the participation for each sport. And the athletic programs in compliance with Title IX regulations. And if you have any questions, that's my budget.
Actually, I have a question if you may, please. On the two new modified sports?
Yes.
The budgets?
Yes.
4,200 for wrestling?
Yep.
2,200 for modified cross country?
Yep.
I'm glad to see we're bringing back modified wrestling and cross country. It's nice to put something back for a change. On those two items, could you please review again what the dollar amounts consist of? Because on the budget page, marked modified sports budget, transportation is added on at the end?
Right.
In addition to those amounts? So, I'm a little confused, I need some clarification.
That dollar amount for those two sports, for, for cross country and wrestling, it's that $4,200, it's plus transportation, plus supervision. So, you're talking probably another, you know, thousand bucks?
So, the figures here where it works is the stipend?
Yep.
These are accurate?
Those are accurate, that's it.
Okay, so these are based on the BTA contracts?
BTA contract, that's correct.
For the upcoming year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any other questions? I can have to say that obviously, it's going to be a little concerning as we run the numbers. You know, everyone knows that I'm an extreme fan of all sports and I would love to see the opportunity to bring additional sports back to our children. But again, we have to remind everyone that the numbers are still coming in from the state and we have to explore all options. And hopefully, when the final numbers are in, we're able to bring these sports back to our kids because, you know, there's no better place for them to learn, to be, you know, involved in every, you know, the full aspect and to open all doors for them. But right now, we have to wait for those numbers to come in and I just want everyone to continue to, to remember that, you know, Governor Cuomo and those numbers will change and change until we have that full picture.
We were going to expand on that during the superintendent's remarks, a little bit more information about the overall budget. But part of what Mr. Romanino and I spoke about is that because of the format that we're using with the workshops, with the various departments coming presenting the budget, the final budget presentation is going to come out of my office when we get close to the, to the actual budget adoption. I believe from what Mr. Romanino was telling me, that the, the sports were cut not because of a budgetary rhythm, but because of lack of numbers. So, ultimately, as long as we have the money to support in the budget, it would be in there. But you're absolutely right, these are still preliminary numbers until we get to the final budget presentation.
Thank you for a very well-rounded presentation and congratulations to all of our students earning NCAA scholarships and to their families who have supported us down that road. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a motion for executive session. Motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual and the board will return as soon as possible. Second, comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The board will return to the next class.